No special recognitions or presentations brings us down to delegations. We do have one delegation, Lorinda Huffman of Mount Clare. You have five minutes.
Okay. Well, that's all right. Well, good evening, everyone. I'm here to do my due diligence as the faculty senate president of Nutterford Primary. I want to thank you guys for allowing me a few minutes to speak to you on behalf of our staff and to follow up on behalf of my Nutterford family. I stand for you today to ensure that all members have received an email or a response in the chat box that was sent out. And as a follow-up, I've got a copy of it for your guys' acknowledgement and consideration on behalf of our staff. And as always, I thank you guys for everything that you do do in helping Harrison County thrive. So I do appreciate you guys. So I do have copies. Thank you. And thank you for your response. I appreciate it. And I am all done. Thank you.
Thank you. Brings down superintendent's update.
Sure, I have several things this evening. I wanted to start with just reminding everybody, we did our teacher trainings this week. We had a good turnout. We offered things that the current curriculum that we're currently using. So I think we had Promethean Board Training. We had lots of different things for secondary and elementary. And that started this week and ran for four days. It finishes tomorrow. And so I just wanted to let curriculum know, appreciate that for putting that together. And I hope it was worthwhile for the teachers. And I hope that we can do something like that again next year. So just as an update for that. Did you guys want to say anything about it? You've been there and been involved?
They were very thankful. We had some people who didn't think they could sign up. And we got them spots. We got them where they needed to go. It was pretty easy going in.
We had the general feedback from just informal conversations with people in the hallway. Very appreciative and pretty impressed. My partner was so impressed with such a day, she repeated actually. So I found that as a compliment, if you know what I'm saying. So no, the informal feedback didn't look positive.
We tried to do different, do the same sessions a couple of different times. So if somebody missed it on a certain day, they could get there to do it. So that's really all I had for curriculum. Facilities, I just have to say, I had the opportunity to stop down at Wilsonburg because it was in my direction and spent about an hour down there talking with the maintenance guys that are currently in there working. It's phenomenal, the work that they're doing there. They have that building. When we get that operational, you guys really need to see that, where they've made that viable, really viable option for United in their programs. The way it's going to be laid out is the way they've been able to section that off to make that program work well in that building. And I was leaving and fortunately Ashley, the principal, was coming in. So she took me another tour to tell me about the curriculum and how the programs were going to work. So I got to speak with the maintenance guys that were there, the custodians that are moving. Most of the stuff's out of that building and inventory. And it was just amazing, the work that they've done for a minimal amount of money, what they've been able to do. So I just wanted to say how much I appreciated that and just seeing that the quality of work that's being done down there by our own maintenance crew. So, and I think Jimmy has an update. He wants to talk about, you gonna talk about facilities or bus first?
Well, we'll talk about transportation always kind of, it gets a little backwards. So we'll talk a little bit about transportation. So we had an opportunity to apply for a pilot program. And it's a six-week program where the legislature's purchased four electric school buses. And they're going to travel those around the state to counties that apply and let them have six weeks, the opportunity to move those around. So, and I talked to Dora a little bit about this and I'll get her final approval. But what we want to do is apply and move, we would just get one bus. And it would be in four counties in different regions that are close to located. So I'd like to be able to take that opportunity to get one of those buses, move it around to our five-feeter areas, make sure that we can maneuver where it would be a good fit so that when we do go to apply, you know, for a new electric school bus, it gives us a pretty good idea of where we can plug those in. And so that would be, it would be good for us. And what we would be doing is gathering data for them to be able to, however they're going to study the efficiency of the buses and how well they use. Kind of with a charging station, it's a mobile station. So we could move it to various locations in the county as far as in.
I think they'll even help equip those with cameras and whatever the county's using. Because they asked that question, you know, you get a bus, they're pretty plain.
So one of the things that I wanted to make you aware of is the fact that Harrison County's not an approved priority county. That doesn't mean we can't get funding. It's that we cannot get the full funding. So the priority counties are going to get full funding, I think it's $345,000. Harrison County would be eligible for like 300 or 200 and I think $25,000. So we would end up paying more to match that than we would to just purchase regular buses. Now, but when I say that, it does add value to our fleet. So when we get reimbursed through the state, they get reimbursed based on the assessed factor of your fleet. So it could add to the fleet. So we want to look at the pros and cons before we just jump into it, just because people are there. So I don't plan on actually applying. We have to apply by the 17th of August. I wasn't planning on just applying because we didn't put any money in the budget for that. So, you know, we would have to come up with like $140,000, $150,000. So we wanted to go through this pilot program and really kind of get our, you know, our bearings with where it would be best suited. It most likely is going to be around Nutterford. Because we want to make sure it's a real quiet bus and it doesn't wake up in the morning. But, so that's our plan. And if you have any questions about that, I think it's, I think it's a very doable plan. We could apply this year, we're not going to get funded. And it's not going to hurt our future applications of getting funded in the future. They're going to fund a priority county. I don't have any other.
Anything facilities, anything?
Well, as far as, so everything's doing well. Furniture truck came today without the furniture movers. So they're going to need tomorrow and start putting, taking things off the truck. Putting things where they need to go. We have the lunch tables coming in tomorrow. And I'd like to thank Julie with the change of purchasing, she kind of has been helping out with the furniture orders and keeping up on that. It's been a big help for me. We, I don't know if you've noticed, but we completely tore out all the landscape around the school. We're pressure washing the school right now. And we don't plan on doing anything as far as planting any shrubbery right now. To be honest with you, it's a safety issue. You have all that large overgrown shrubbery up against the building, perfect place for somebody to hide. Jason Snyder and I talked about it. They even had rocks and some of them are large rocks.
Are the rocks going to?
The rocks are all large. We're going to put mulch in there. And then hopefully what we can do in the future, in talking with Laura Dick, she would like to do more like planters where they can plant some shrubbery and, or flowers and different things like that. I know South Harrison, almost every school that has shrubbery around it, there's a lot of good, it looks good when they, when they do it. And you have volunteer groups that come in and they put it all together, it's good intentions. And then they move one, their kids move one, shrubbery keeps growing. Before you know it, it's overgrown. And then you go through that process trying to tear out. So we want to try to put more sustainable, smaller, you know, aestheticly pleasing looking planters in there. We actually had an email from someone, wanted to make sure we could have that.
What about the lettering? That was in that email?
Yeah, the lettering, the lettering is supposed to be here tomorrow.
Okay.
And they're going to have it put up. It's not, it's not only the lettering, it's the room numbers, it's everything. So yeah, that signage, it should all come through tomorrow, Friday, maybe Monday, I'm not sure. The mail runs slow.
And there was a site visit yesterday, correct, at Simpson Elementary?
Oh yeah, we did a site visit on the roof. I kind of forgot about that. McKinley came down and met with WYK, myself and Danny. And they had several people there to assess the work that needs to be done on the roof and also the HVAC. Identified exactly which HVAC units and the fresh air ventilation system that needs to be installed and the curving that needs to be done. So they're going to go back and they're going to put the whole project together, take a look at it. There's a possibility some of it could be an alternate. We're not looking to do that now, but we want to assess what the price may come in as. So that, but we were there for probably an hour, well over an hour doing that. And they said they'd get back to me probably by Thursday or Thursday next week.
Two things that you, when you're, one, you said putting mulch. Now, you know, if you put regular mulch down, no time at all, you know, it looks good when it first goes down, before you go very far, you know, the coloration and everything goes away. Because I know I found this out in my own house. So I took all my mulch out and I put the rubberized mulch down. It's a little more expensive, but it's held, you know, its color and everything. So, you know, you might want to put that in consideration whenever you sell the mulch. And second thing was, you was talking about all the furniture and everything being delivered. And I know we want to get it done and everything. And I know that next week, starting next Tuesday, the maintenance crew that's been there for the summer, or supposedly they're done after Monday, I just think it maybe, you know, on a volunteer basis, if they want to, is maybe to extend them, you know, from Tuesday through to Friday, you know, and maybe they can come in the hall with the bulk of getting the furniture in its place so that it can be.
I know, I know we won't turn that, we won't turn that opportunity down.
Well, I would think that.
When I was at Wilsonburg yesterday, I spoke with Danny because you had mentioned that. And he said if we need them, but, you know, he would let us know if he needs them. So he appreciated that.
And it's not only that crew, but it's also the crew that's.
The custodial.
Whoever, I was going to say, whoever's out there.
Our custodial crews have had, we've had a lot of summer school, a lot of activity in our buildings. So they're just, yeah, they need a little extra time, most likely, to get those buildings ready.
Well, I'd rather, you know, see us go that way and get everything done and, you know, so that we'll be ready to, when we start school, it's, it's not like, well, we've got this left to do or whatever and my school's going. So I just think that it's, it'd be advantageous to us to try that.
We generally don't have a finance update, but we had a question, I think it came up at the retreat about the P card rebates. I think it came up on the amount. So I had Mr. Spadefor work with the bank, just so we could see a history of what those rebates have been. So you can see each quarter what you get as a rebate or what we generally get. So he did that and I appreciate that.
They did it based off of, since they started the program, then on a yearly basis?
Just for information.
That's our yearly basis of return.
It's a whole year.
That's the whole year, that's the whole fiscal year. They do theirs based off of the fiscal, just to make sure. We are working with United right now, starting a program to identify more sources to be able to use P card. We have some vendors who accept credit card, but they don't accept it. I mean, they accept it, but it would be more hassle for us to contact each one of them for every single invoice we have. So United can set that up to where we would go through them basically to pay invoices. They could send them one-time codes or send them to their Visa terminals to kind of help us to increase it. So we're starting, we're trying to work with them to increase the amount of P card transactions we have because obviously it helps the rebate too. So we're starting those campaigns probably in September.
I think the P card, you know, can be, you know, a good thing, but I think it's something where there has to be some kind of limitations on who, who has the P card. And I think if it's in any building, principal, you know, should be in control of the P card and as to the purchases made and so that you get your invoices and they can be paid in a timely manner and everything. I think it's not a matter of just giving it to somebody, say here's a P card, you go and then all of a sudden if you lose the invoice and do all that. I just think that it's good. I mean, it's a good return. But I just think that there has to be, we have to tighten it up.
We're looking at all these other procedures.
Right.
So I'm going to just mention it to you guys.
Be more efficient and tighten up security.
Yeah, I think it's.
Thank you, Mr. Spadefor. Under personnel, we're getting to the end of the summer season and posting and we're trying to fill positions. And after speaking with Mrs. Leesberg and looking at the way the postings are running, we'd like to have, we're requesting that we, if we could, a special meeting after the 16th meeting, this would be around the 18th, so we could get people hired on that meeting. Because there's going to be, the way the posting falls, probably time for principals to interview, get us their recommendations so we can get those people hired before they start on the 19th. So we're asking if it's possible to have a special meeting on the 18th.
Personnel.
Personnel, just for personnel.
18th is the next meeting date. So there's one more personnel thing going on after tonight, right?
Sorry, tomorrow.
Sorry, tomorrow, the new posting. So then it'll end on the, you know, after that, it's supposed to be the 18th. Now you want to have.
Our regular meeting is the 16th.
16th, okay. So there'll be personnel hired then, and then you want to have another meeting on the 19th for more personnel or?
The 18th, because the way the posting is, they're not going to be able to get the matrix out to the principals until Thursday, Thursday before the board meeting. And they would just be getting their matrix. So if they have an opportunity to do any interviews, there's no way they would be able to do those within that day. Or at least they would have to have a recommendation by Monday. So it gives them a couple of days to be able to get their recommendation and be able to give that just a couple extra days to help them before school starts.
So instead of the 16th, there being personnel, it would be on?
Oh no, there'll be personnel on the 16th and then this will be a finish up or at least more.
If there's no.
We're going to have another posting.
If she has one on the 18th, we just do it at noon. That's the only thing that would be on the agenda would be personnel. So if you want to do it at noon, we shouldn't take that long. We've done that before. It may only take 10, 15 minutes at the most, so just do it at noon.
Just give the principals opportunities to do any kind of interview.
Is there any objection to that?
I'll need to call and then you do as well.
That's the only item on the agenda. Unless something would come up, I anticipate that.
I don't know anything.
If it's just for that, then there's no objection whatsoever.
And for safety and health, we did order the weapons detectors and he has, Jason has set up training, I think it's the 16th of August. So that has worked out for the four sets starting. So they were ordered. And then we have a UTC meeting, I believe, tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, Mr. Huffman. That's all I have for superintendent's update.
One question, probably a maintenance question. In regard to the thought of working on Nutterford, has been any more bids brought in?
Yeah, they have, yeah, we've got to secure when we're moving forward.
Okay.
You haven't opened a bid yet?
They weren't visited.
Okay.
Closed.
Closed.
Yeah. Didn't have to formally bid. I guess they were under point about that.
Okay. Okay.
Did Jason Snyder, did he get with Mr. Schwann, and he was going to this week?
They have a meeting scheduled Thursday at 3:00 PM to talk about, more in-depth about that software. Yes.
Were you able to meet with Heidi in regard to the CTE?
Heidi, we have gotten a copy of a job description from another county that has a similar position. We had a combination of a coordinator's job, so she's looking at all that and it's a priority to come up with a job description that fits what the needs are. Yeah, they're working on that right now. Yes. It should be on the next board agenda for approval, I hope.
I will do.
I haven't talked to her today, so she should have all the information she needs.
Anything else?
No, that's all I have. Thank you.
Brings down to approval consent items. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the consent items.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Appointment of board, to the board of trustees of the Clarksburg Harrison Public Library. And this is continuation of a current appointment. We have an appointment to the board. We do give funding to the Clarksburg Harrison Public Library and they've asked us to reappoint Rachel Jarvis to that who is a current appointee from the board. Is there a motion?
I'll move to appoint Rachel Jarvis to the board of trustees of the Clarksburg Harrison Public Library.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Parent Education Resource Center contract. And this is the contract for Pam Hudson-Piller.
Make a motion to, for the Pam Hudson-Piller. Continue.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Parent Education Resource Center contract. This one is for Tracy Beal. Is there a motion? Could have taken them together, I guess.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve item C and D, Parent Education Resource Center contract renewal for Tracy Beal and Kristy LaMasters.
It's been moved for combined C and D. There is a motion to accept Beal and LaMasters. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Number Smith.
Any discussion?
Just, yes, this is a great program and I think that these three people work very well together and I'm glad that they're continuing to be willing to do this.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. No old business, no policy updates, personnel matters. And there is the personnel matters with the personnel agenda addendum. Resignation of Madison Green, fourth grade teacher, full-time, 200-day employment term, North Three Elementary School, effective August 3rd, 2022. And the resignation of Peggy Posey, bus operator, bus 31L, full-time, 200-day employment term, six-hour run, Transportation Department, effective August 3rd, 2022.
The reason that those were brought in as an agenda adjustment is so we can post those immediately and get them in this place.
Is there a motion on the personnel?
We're just voting on these two right here.
No, this would be the personnel, with the agenda, with the agenda.
No, then I call for executive.
Can you read the?
I move present to 6-9A-4 of the West Virginia Code that the board go in the executive session to discuss personnel and personnel matters, which if discussed in public might affect adversity, the reputation of any person.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the executive session.
Seconded. Moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Brings us down to personnel matters with the personnel agenda adjustment. Is there a motion on personnel matters?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we pull out the vote for the principal and make it a separate one other than the other items on there.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. So we'll take up the personnel matters, the personnel agenda with the agenda addendum first. And is there a motion to accept the personnel agenda excluding the item that was pulled?
Make a motion that we accept the personnel agenda.
Second. Moved in second and in discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Brings us down to the item that was pulled and that would be the item for the principal, number four. So with that, is there a motion for that item?
I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? Mr. Hope seconds.
I seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn? Actually, board member comments. Sorry about that. We added those still. Mr. Tucker?
I have no comments to it.
Ms. Smith?
No.
Mr. Hope?
I just look forward to, you know, school getting started back and us getting things done within the buildings in regard to roofs, security entrances, and as that progresses along, you know, I know the kids are starting to get a little antsy and want to get back in school. At least I know my grandchildren do. And I definitely agree with them. It's time for them to go back. And I love my grandchildren.
Yeah, I just want to make a statement and say that thank you for coming tonight. I appreciate your voices and I appreciate what it is that you are saying. I do think that there are a number of other things to consider, but I am very appreciative of you coming and expressing your opinions tonight. And I encourage everyone to partake in the public process and I think that that is very important. So thank you.
And I guess all I have, Joe, I'm glad you're going to get a roof.
I am too.
Yes.
Thank you.
You need one. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion we adjourn.
Second. Moved in second and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Children in peace, go in peace.